Good evening, everyone. The July 2022 Brookhaven Borough Council Meeting will now be called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone. Bagger.
Good evening. The deceased residence for the month of June 2022. George Leatherbury, former Chairman of the Planning Commission. Ad Alberto Burgos, John Icaro, Barry Durham, Donald Schlack, Teloive Wright, Harold Hampton, former zoning officer and longtime employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Bagger. Mr. Willert, would you give us a roll call, please?
Roll call. Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez is absent. Ms. Sewicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willert, Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Vice.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Chief Vice, are you coming up first?
Tonight, we are excited to be swearing in a new part-time police officer, our borough. His name is Taylor Rishclen. So we welcome you. We welcome his friends and family that are here to support him tonight as he embarks on his new career. Real quickly, a little bit about Taylor. He is 23 years old. He's from Wayne, Pennsylvania. He's a graduate of Radnor High School. He graduated from Auburn University in 2021 with a bachelor's degree in business administration. In June of 2022, he graduated from Montgomery County Police Academy, which I'm partial to. I'm also a graduate of Montgomery County's academy, I might add. Taylor is joined here tonight by his mom Patty, his stepdad Jim, and his stepbrother Andrew, as well as the Police Academy Director, Sissy Hill is also here with us. Thank you, Sissy, for being here, as well as some of our fellow officers in the back of the room to show their support for you. During Taylor's time in school, I should mention that he submitted other interesting facts. When he was 15 years old, he attained his Eagle Scout through the Boy Scouts of America. So it was a very young age to be able to attain such an accomplishment. He's also volunteered with the ABC House, which stands for a Better Chance. He also went on a mission trip to Louisiana where he assisted victims of Hurricane Katrina. He has also made Dean's List while he was attending Auburn University. During Taylor's hiring process, I was fortunate to be able to spend some time with him and talk to him in order to get to know him, to see if he would be a fit for our borough. And I can tell you that he's a good young man with a sense of determination that I truly appreciate. I'm confident he will be an asset to our police department and to our borough. Taylor, we're happy you are here. We look forward to seeing you grow in your law enforcement career. We welcome you to one of the most elite police departments in Delaware County. So, this point you're right.
Yep. I.
I.
Taylor Rishclen.
Taylor Rishclen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinance.
And the ordinance.
Of the Brookhaven Borough.
Of the Brookhaven Borough.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a part-time.
As a part-time.
Brookhaven police officer.
Brookhaven police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color.
To a person's race, color.
Sex, religious creed.
Sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Witness my hand and the official seal this 11th day of July 2022. 2022. Congratulations.
James.
Congratulations.
Is there a group here from the Mills at Rose Valley? Please approach the podium. See how you do with volleyball. We have one representative speaking for your group. Nature of your business, please. You don't have to state your address.
Okay. As you know, we've been in touch with the council since 2017 about the sinkhole as a result of a broken storm conduit coming from Brookhaven. And we did receive your recent letter, and we're just not confident that this project would ever become prioritized.
Well, for one, the former council president and myself were given bad information. They thought it was our property. We were also told that it would be a $15,000 job.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. It's going to be more like $70,000 to $80,000. Second, the borough no longer believes they're responsible for it. And third, it's not a sinkhole. It was designed that way. The hole around that outlet has widened. It's not a sinkhole. A sinkhole is land that sinks due to being undercut by water. It is not a sinkhole. We believe our solicitor and engineer that Hilltop is responsible for this issue.
Hilltop.
Hilltop, the Hilltop Association.
Which is in Brookhaven, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And they're a private entity.
They're a private entity. They own their property. Can I ask what the actual concern is here? You're stating an environmental concern. I don't see an environmental concern. And I don't see much of a safety concern. Now, we did go down there and replace the construction fence around it.
Well, the thing is, it's going to get bigger and bigger because there's a broken pipe, so that water fills up every time. And trees have already come down into that because it's been five years now. We're concerned about children playing there, thinking it's fun to jump in when there's a storm.
Is it any more dangerous than any section of the creek bank from where Ridley Creek starts all the way down to Delaware River? I was down there twice. I looked at it. I don't see what the danger is, to be honest. And...
Well, it's a matter of opinion.
No, sure. Now, backing up, if it was borough property, we would have considered it for $15,000. And we never signed anything. So I know you used our words against us, and you sent us a legal letter quoting me and quoting Mr. Donaway and all that good stuff. We're not fixing this for $70,000 if it was our property anytime soon. We agreed to wish list it. However, since then, we have come to find that it is not our property. We did not install the stormwater system. Period. It was installed in the 70s by... By whom? Charles?
Scott.
When Hilltop was built. So what we can do is put you in touch with the Hilltop Association. That's all we can do. We can't spend tax dollars on something that we don't own and that we're not responsible for.
Okay.
And I'm sorry you got bad information previously, but I'm not alone in buying into that bad information. But I've since been educated. All of us have. Mr. Catania here has been doing some digging, and we believe it is the responsibility of Hilltop.
Okay.
Now, I can get you their contact information.
We would like that very much.
And we would even be willing to jump in on a meeting between your association and their association to see if we can resolve this. But we can't spend tax dollars on something that is not our responsibility. It's just insanity.
We understand that.
Insanity.
Sure, it's not your responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a layout of the piping somewhere? Blueprints of something that you can show us?
Mr. Catania?
Or you could show Hilltop?
We found that one easement plan.
What would that be, Mr. Catania?
There's an easement plan which shows that storm drainage easement for Scott, the development court.
The developer that built Hilltop, basically, in the 70s.
If so, you have to approach the podium. I'm sorry. The public has... Anyone that speaks has to approach the podium. Or you can bring the microphone to them. Pop the microphone off and bring the wireless mic to them if you don't want to walk up.
I'm trying to figure out where Hilltop is.
It's right up...
I know where Hilltop is, but I can't picture...
It's almost directly up the hill from the footbridge there. Ma'am?
Thank you for entertaining our concern. We were under the impression that this was Brookhaven property. No one ever made a reference to another owner for that property. What do we have as far as our responsibility?
Well, it's on the land trust.
It's on the land trust, right. So how can...
So the Mills at Rose Valley owns the land across the creek from your development?
We have a land trust.
Around that, okay.
So where does the land trust co-mingle with Hilltop? Do they have an HOA? How are they governed? Are they governed by...
They're governed by an HOA, I believe multiple HOAs.
Yeah, I never heard the term Hilltop before.
Well, they're right up... Yeah, they're right up...
We didn't know where they are.
Oh, okay.
We didn't know where they are, but all this time, we were under the impression that this was Brookhaven property.
So too was I.
I mean, coming from...
A lot of people were involved here in Brookhaven.
But the drain...
Apparently, they didn't do the digging that myself and Mr. Catania did, and we believe we've proved otherwise.
Well, I traced the source. This is my business. I'm in the waterworks business. And I have an engineering background. So I respect Mr. Catania's information that he's given you. We were under the impression that this was Brookhaven since it's coming from the Brookhaven drainage site, emptying onto our trust.
At the edge of Hilltop's property.
We didn't know that.
It is. I too traced it. It's at the top of the hill. I traced it myself. I was over there.
Right by the recreation field, by the ballpark.
So that's part of Hilltop's drainage.
Mr. Catania?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, well, then I guess the next thing we have to do is... Because it is a hazard. It is a hazard, even though we put tape around it, caution tape around it.
I did have Public Works go back down there, and they reinstalled temporary construction fence because the previous had fallen into the hole. So we did do that. When we did that, we thought it was our property.
How about that?
And this discovery was last week, so we did do that. I'm not arguing with you. I disagree that this is a tremendous hazard. I would let nature take its toll, wash the whole thing out, and you have one big outlet right to the creek. I don't think it's any more of a hazard than any stretch of creek bank all along Ridley Creek. I mean, I don't see the hazards. Not to say that the owner shouldn't replace that piece of corrugated pipe that has come dislodged, but it is still flowing freely to the creek from that...
If the pipe were repaired, it wouldn't erode the property.
It's still going to be eroded. That's in a floodplain. When that floods, the water goes up to the base of the hill during some of these storms that we've been having. That's not going to correct it. It's going to give you a temporary fix. That's how the pipe was moved in the first place, I would imagine.
I live right across from that. The water doesn't go up that high.
It certainly does go up to that hole. I've seen it flood that high, much like Chester Creek. That's in a floodplain. I'm not saying it does it every single storm, but every major storm, it does.
And you say you have put hazard tape around it?
Construction fence, the orange rolled construction fence. It's for...
That's a lot of years.
Okay, see, I wasn't sure if previous councils had our Public Works do it or you folks did it. But I believe they removed the old one. I haven't been down there since they've done it, but they did put up temporary construction fence.
Well, thank you for your attention to the degree that you have...
And we'll get you in touch with Hilltop. And if, you know, if they want to deny responsibility, then we'll go from there.
Okay. We appreciate it.
We would be more than willing to help if we owned it. Not to say that this would be at the top of the list. We have a lot of budgetary issues and unplanned budgetary issues. We would have to punt it, but we believe it's Hilltop's responsibility. And we'll put you in touch. I have one of your emails. I'll try and get you that information tomorrow. Send it over, too.
If you could send out things to our...
Andrea probably.
Andrea.
Andrea, it is Andrea, yeah.
If you could forward that information.
Yeah, and I tried to call her today. I couldn't get ahold of her to give her a heads up. I didn't know if she was attending.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Bring us to the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that'd like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yes, Mr. Mara?
Good evening to everyone, and hello to the Borough Council. What I'm about to talk about here is my suspension as Chairman of Brookhaven Zoning. My name is Paul Mara. I lived in a borough with my family, a professional position, was a retired Delaware County employee, was continuing my service with the county. My appointment borough position is suspended Chairman of Zoning as of July 1st. At this time, I'm hoping without interruption to try and read my prepared statement within the public a lot of time. Let me start first by saying, I tried to contact the council in reference to an email which was both the zoning secretary and I received late the evening before the past extended holiday weekend. The email received was to inform us of an action vote occurring at the July meeting. My borough email account was suspended, so I was unable to respond in kind. This action order is because of refusal to appoint a member of the zoning hearing board after supposedly legal advice. Let it be known, as far as legal advice is concerned, I have tried on several occasions to speak with both zoning solicitor Robert Scott and my borough solicitor, Mr. John Wills, and neither...
You have no right to contact Mr. Wills, by the way. But go ahead. You have every right to contact Robert Scott. Continue.
And neither man tried to call me. The council vote is based off a dictated mail...
There was no vote.
Excuse me?
There was no vote. You are suspended. I did that. That was unilateral action by me. Your removal from the zoning hearing board. I will speak now, Mr. Mara. You will receive a letter. You'll be given a 15-day notice. You are permitted a 15-day notice informing you of council's intent to remove you from the zoning hearing board. That letter will be sent out within the next couple of days. You can disregard the email that said we would vote tonight.
I can continue?
For now.
Okay. The council's vote is based off what you're saying, it wasn't a vote, based off dictated email referring to zoning needs to be organized. Regardless of borough title positions you may have, I was not for my email will be shared between council and board, which is illegal. Not only could it be copyrighted for...
Let me interject that a member of your board shared an email with council. Because what you did was a violation of the Pennsylvania Planning Code. Which is in turn a violation of state law. And that was approved by you and the zoning secretary, Adrian Hallinan. If you violate state law, council has the right to remove you from the zoning hearing board.
But that's your opinion.
It is not an opinion. It is the opinion of your solicitor and our solicitor.
You let me finish. I'll continue.
We are done here. You are done. You're done.
Let me speak.
Sit down, Mr. Mara. You're done. The public does not need to hear this.
Ah, of course not.
This is a matter between the council yourself and Adrian Hallinan. And you're fortunate that I don't give details to the public. Both of you are fortunate.
So are you.
Oh, so am I. Okay, Mr. Mara. You are done. Done. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? Good evening, ma'am.
My name's Lorraine DeRosa. I'm at 3730 Arlington Avenue. I will be in my house two years, August 5th. And my question tonight is, I still do not have a UNO. I recently tried to purchase a house, and at first, the buyer went with someone else. And they came back, they called me, and I was unable to accept the house because I realized with my realtor, I can't sell my house. I didn't have a UNO. And I'm just wondering, I hope opportunity doesn't knock once, because I gave up a house I really loved.
Mr. Catania, what was the update on that? I emailed you two weeks ago. I was told that the UNO was going to be issued.
I'm pulling up right now. I'm pretty confident it was issued about two weeks ago, about a day after that email, but I will check and let you know. There was issue, obviously, you're aware that there was issues after the construction, after you moved into the house, which, you know, it was moved into without the UNO to start with. And there was issues with the construction, both the site work and some interior work that Mr. Grant was trying to work through. We understand that that's all been, basically, not necessarily addressed, but to your satisfaction that it's acceptable.
Acceptable, yes.
I can tell you that I'm going to find out before then this meeting's over, but I'm pretty confident that the UNOs for that property were issued.
Okay, I did not get one. Thank you for looking into it. And as I said, I hope opportunity knocks again.
Thank you. So anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yes, Mr. Hastings?
Gary Hastings. I live at 5200 Hilltop Drive.
Sure.
I'll be brief. I'd just like to announce my resignation from the zoning board.
Okay. Does not the zoning board have to vote on that resignation, or can council do it?
Council can make a motion to accept the resignation.
Who wants to motion accept Gary Hastings' resignation from the Brookhaven Borough Zoning Hearing Board?
I'll make the motion.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Hastings. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. First public discussion session is closed. Chief Vice, sir.
For the month of June, Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned a total of 892 CAT assignments through DelCom. As I stated last month, we were over 100 incidents more than the month prior. We are 43 above that for this month. So you can clearly see the common theme is that we're getting busier as we go along. Some noteworthy incidents we had, we had one robbery, two aggravated assaults, one burglary, 11 theft, three simple assaults, three criminal mischief vandalism, three fraud. We had 10 DUIs for the month, and I would just note that that is a significant increase for our borough. We had 10 DUI arrests. It's a lot. Four public drunkenness, two disorderly conduct, one narcotics investigation, eight animal complaints, two solicitor complaints, one curfew violation, 50 suspicious conditions, three harassment, 12 disputes or domestic disputes, seven civil complaints, 55 medical assists, four mental health responses, 58 assist other agencies, 20 alarms, 26 vehicle crashes, and 25 hazardous conditions. For the month, total arrests, we had adult arrests, there were 33, so clearly, we were averaging more than one a day. It was a very busy month. We had two juvenile arrests. For citations, there were 155 issued, and I would just note that of the 155, 42 of them were issued on Chandler Drive for speeding violations. There were nine parking violations and 150 warnings issued. And I would just note that, as you can see, between citations and warnings, we're staying pretty much even across the board. We're not heavy-handed in one direction. As far as accreditation, we continue to remain ahead of schedule, so I'm very confident with our progress there. I would like to thank our officers that have stepped up this month to go above and beyond to help out with all of our calls for service. We've seen a significant increase in retail thefts and seeing the officers that have stepped up to help out is greatly appreciated, so I can't say thank you enough. Each month, we will be recognizing an officer for his outstanding work. And just very briefly, this month, we recognize Officer Eastman. He continues to show that he's committed to his chosen career. He often volunteers to handle investigations and conducts them thoroughly and efficiently. He's shown that he has good time management skills and an incredible drive for his law enforcement career. He is often seen aggressively controlling the borough and seeks out any criminal activity in order to keep all of our residents safe. Officer Eastman is steadfast in his traffic enforcement efforts, and he led our department in the month of June for arrests. He had a total of nine arrests for the month of June. He also engages in constructive conversation regarding law enforcement, case law, practices, and training in order to assist in moving our department forward in a positive direction. So I congratulate him for a job well done. I'd also like to thank all the officers that put out the extra effort for the enforcement action that we did conduct on Chandler Drive. As I mentioned earlier, I talked about DUIs having increased, whatever the reason might be, the warmer weather, people gathering out more, parties, et cetera. Just asking that everyone be responsible. For us to have 10 DUIs in our borough in a month, that's a lot. Some of these were a direct result from vehicle crashes. It is our goal that everyone gets home safe, so please, with all the resources that are out there, I'm just asking you to have a sober ride. Call me, I'll come pick you up. As far as training for the month, Officers Wetton and Eastman attended range training. Officer Wetton attended his monthly SWAT training. And Officers Wetton and Kelso also attended their drone flight training. And just two last things. This month, we attended Coburn Elementary School's Living History Museum. I just wanted to say it was so interesting to go over and see that. I was really impressed. The students had to have everything memorized, and they were in costume, and it was just really a fun time to go over and listen to their presentation, so we were really grateful to be invited to that. We were also invited to attend Coburn's Celebration Day. We had a lot of fun playing with them, doing the different activities and things like that. And much to our surprise, at the end of it, surprised our police department with a donation for us to use to better assist us in doing our job. So that was very... We were very surprised, and we just can't say thank you enough for that. So very much appreciated. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Chief Montella?
Before he goes, Chief, I just wanted to thank you and the officers for actively patrolling during the Fourth of July, especially during your birthday, so greatly appreciate it, so.
Caven Fire Company's, let's see, here, June 2022 fire report. We had five fire incidents, 13 for the year, 29 non-fire, 28 mutual aid, four drills, for a total of 67 for the month, 325 fire rescue calls this year, $1,000 loss on structure, a total of 67 for the month, 325 fire rescue calls this year, $1,000 loss on structure, $2,500 loss on contents, for a total of $3,500 for the year, I mean, for the month, and we had $1,250,000 of property in the borough endangered. For the year, we had $1,550,000 of property in danger. No firefighter injuries for the month, two for the year. Our manpower was 67 calls, average of 14 firefighters, 375 hours in service for the month, 4,019 for the year, four training sessions, average of 26 firefighters, 189 hours logged for training for the month, 1,544 for the year. Interesting calls for the month, we had, Brookhaven had one pedestrian struck in a Wawa parking lot, we answered three building fires in the borough, 105 East Maple Avenue, we had a building fire at 352 Diner, and a building fire at the Beer Barn with a dumpster up against the side of the building. Three motor vehicle accidents with injuries, 352 on Ridge Boulevard, Brookhaven Road and Mount Vernon, 29 Upland Road, 3305 Edgemont, Brookhaven Road and Chandler Drive, Creek Road and Lincoln Drive, and we had two gas leaks at the Stonehill Apartments. Assisted Chester Township on a motor vehicle accident on Albert Road, assisted Chester City on a second alarm building fire on Carter Avenue, and a motor vehicle accident in the city of Chester at Morton Avenue and Terrell. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on two building fires, 2901 Edgemont and 26 Roland Road. Assisted Asset Township on an accident with entrapment at Pancoast and Crystal Road. Assisted Upland Fire Company on a building fire at 8th Avenue and an accident at 799 Upland Road. Assisted Concordville Fire Department on a building fire on 1320 Birmingham Road. We assisted Folsom Fire Company on a second alarm building fire on Monke Drum Avenue, and assisted Middletown Township on a building fire at 8 Windcroft Drive. Our monthly training was those line advancement into a structure, we had a rescue tool class, pump operations class, and we had a special class with autism awareness for our firefighters on calls mixing with people with autism, and the instructor was Alex Mann, and the police department already had him in for training as well, it was a good class he gave us. And we, the fire company took delivery of a Department of Community Economic Development grant through Senator Kane's office. We were awarded $50,000 for battery-operated rescue tools and put one large cutter and four rams and five chargers and 13 spare batteries in service. So that's it on the fire end, on the ambulance. For June 2022, total ambulance calls for the month, 227, transported 153 people to the hospital. ALS dispatch were 134 calls, BLS dispatch were 93, and the ambulance has answered 1,343 calls for the year, so that's just outrageous, it's screaming.
Thank you, sir. Adam Mayor.
I just have two things. One is to congratulate Officer Ryan Eastman for being the June Officer of the Month, and personally welcoming aboard our new part-time officer, Taylor Rich Clem, that I just swore in. Other than that, I'm finished.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wells.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. Simply as a follow-up to the storm drain issue that had been brought up by a representative of the Mills at Rose Valley Homeowners Association. Anytime the borough contemplates a public works project, it must do an initial assessment to confirm that the project is in fact owned by the borough. If in fact we determine or we don't have sufficient information to conclude that a storm drain is in fact owned by the borough, then again, technically, it is improper, it is illegal to expend borough taxpayer funds to replace, repair, remediate private property. We simply can't do that. Now certainly, if the association is able to provide us with any information or documentation or evidence that would confirm that the borough does in fact own that storm drain pipe, then we will certainly give it some further consideration. Secondly, on my list, I have a list of various action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening. I will briefly comment on the Brookhaven self-storage land development project. I am pleased to advise that I did receive the irrevocable letter of credit from the developer to ensure the completion of public improvements associated with that project. Therefore, I have given the authorization to the borough engineer to release any building or construction permits. I believe the project will commence with various site improvements, so I suspect we will see work commencing very shortly at that development area. Next on my list of action items, concerns, and ordinance for Borough Council's consideration and adoption this evening, if the public and Borough Council may recall, last year, we were able to approve a new five-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. And part of that agreement obligated the borough to make certain amendments to the police pension fund. And there were basically two amendments that the borough agreed to as part of our collective bargaining agreement, and that is number one, to provide for an early retirement benefit in accordance with Act 24. And again, we did do in fact an assessment to confirm that that early retirement benefit would have no appreciable cost to the police pension plan. And secondly, and most importantly, we were able to achieve through collective negotiations with the FOP, a reduced police pension disability benefit that of course will be a great savings to the pension fund and hence the taxpayers here in Brookhaven Borough. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would now be in order to adopt that ordinance, which again, amends the police pension fund in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement reached between the borough and the FOP in October of 2021.
Who wants to motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
All right. Another issue on the agenda concerns a resolution for Borough Council's consideration authorizing a partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements associated with the Brookhaven, or strike that, the Franklin Brookhaven LLC project, also known as the residences of Brookhaven Glen. That of course is our 55 and over community located at the intersection of Edgemont Avenue and Radio Lane. This is actually a 13th request, again, for release of certain monies associated with the completion of public improvements. At this time, the developer has requested a release in the amount of $56,862.10. This release has been reviewed and is recommended for approval by the borough engineer, and therefore, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order, again, to adopt this resolution authorizing the release in the amount of $56,862.10. Again, for the developer at Franklin Brookhaven, again, known as the residences of Brookhaven Glen.
So moved.
What is it? Who wants a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions? Question carries.
My next three resolutions for Borough Council's consideration concern the two-lot residential subdivision at the end of Zoor Street that has recently been completed. UNOs have been issued to the two property owners, and those properties are now being occupied. So there are two lots in that subdivision. At this time, the first resolution is simply releasing the amount of $1,000, again, for certain public improvements with regard to lot number one.
Janice?
If it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to release that $1,000.
What is the pleasure of council, Janice?
Yes, so moved.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
The second resolution, again, for the Zoor Street project concerns lot number two. And again, the developer is requesting that the sum of $1,000 has been released. Again, this is for the completions of lot number two. This particular request has been reviewed and approved by the borough engineer, so again, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order authorizing that release.
So moved.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
And then Borough Council and the public, as you may be aware, as a result of this two-lot subdivision, the developer was obligated and required to extend Zoor Street and make certain improvements to Zoor Street so that we would be able to have ingress and egress to that two-lot subdivision. And therefore, he is requesting a partial escrow release in the amount of $995. Again, this is with regard to the renovations and extension to Zoor Street. Again, this resolution has been reviewed, it has been recommended for approval by the engineer, and so again, if a motion would be the pleasure of council to adopt this resolution authorizing the release in the amount of $995.
It's a pleasure.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
And finally, I note, as the mayor indicated, the passing of the longtime zoning officer here, Mr. Harold Hampton. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Hampton for approximately two years before he retired at the right young age of 86. He was a man of incredible knowledge, somebody who knew the ins and outs of the borough, knew the zoning code up and down, just had a wealth of information as a longtime resident of the borough. I appreciated his counsel and recommendations. He will be a gentleman clearly missed here in the borough, so I want to extend my sympathies to his family as well.
Was a special man.
Yep. Now, with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on my agenda appears to be motion to appoint or approve ad-use construction for former media work at Sampson Park Stormwater Management Base in amount of $4,225.
So moved.
Who wants a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions or opposed? Motion carries.
My report, some reports on file, but a couple of things I do want to mention is that the borough we required to adopt a stormwater management ordinance update, Mr. Wells is working with myself and the ordinance committee to get that done by the end of September.
I think it would be helpful, Charles, if you, myself, perhaps the ordinance chairperson, Councilwoman Fuchs, and perhaps President Heller would meet to review this particular stormwater management ordinance. My suggestion would be that we have it for council's review at the August monthly meeting. I'll probably be asking for a motion to advertise this ordinance at the August monthly meeting with the idea of adopting the ordinance at the September monthly meeting, right? And this ordinance is quite lengthy, it's probably 70, 75 pages in length, it's rather technical, it's not the easiest of reading. If you had trouble perhaps sleeping at night, if you suffer from insomnia, I would certainly encourage you or members of the public to certainly review that ordinance, and I suspect it will help with those particular symptoms. But nonetheless, we are required by law, by DEP, to amend the stormwater management ordinance, and so we'll look to, again, at the August monthly meeting to vote to advertise that ordinance and the September monthly meeting for adoption.
You almost put me out. Charles, anything else?
It's still my turn.
Oh, it's still your turn, go ahead. All right. J 2.0.
Then the other thing we discussed previously was the Chandler Drive traffic calming. We promised that I prepare a concept plan for council consideration, that has been done. The concept plan basically shows the addition of three speed humps on Chandler Drive between Coburn Boulevard and Mount Vernon. That would be the ideal situation, there's nothing saying that we can't start with one or two and monitor the traffic afterwards and see what impact each one has individually. The remaining blocks from Mount Vernon to Brookhaven Road don't meet the criteria for us to install a speed hump, there's requirements you need to be from intersections, so we're kind of limited to the speed humps between those two blocks. To give you an idea, we have a couple of options there, we can go with, they sell temporary, like rubber speed humps that are maybe a good option to start with, those run about $3,000, $3,500 apiece. You know, install those, again, monitor traffic, see how effective they are really going to be, and then potentially consider installing permanent ones that are probably going to cost you more, the range of $5,000 to say $7,500 per speed hump.
Oh, we can still vote to approve your plan. Like you said, if you want to go from three to two, for whatever reason, we can amend that anyway, so I still have it under my piece to motion to approve the plan that you sent to council. That's all I have, and you should have in front of you. One second, Ms. Bank. You can come on up. You still have to give your name and address.
Caitlin Bank, 4509 Chandler. We had temporary ones in the past, several summers in a row, they break, they fly off, they're noisy, they're terrible.
The models that Mr. Catania is referring to are not those small plastic, very brittle speed humps, by the way. Council's gonna wait.
The ones that...
We're gonna wait, bud.
Right, the ones that, they've been used in other providence on Plushmole Road, which is a pretty heavily traveled road, they didn't really have any issues with those there, so I'm assuming that those installed properly on Chandler Drive would be sufficient. Again, this is a temporary...
It's not those small humps that they had on Chandler and Shepherd previously, they were a failure.
They were nailed.
They were bolted, yeah.
So the temporary ones are roughly $3,000, and the permanent ones are roughly $5,000?
Five, like $7,500.
So how often do you need to replace the temporary ones?
Provided no one vandalizes them or gets by a snowplow or something like that, they should last for quite a few years.
Okay, but the permanent ones would last for more?
No, yes, I know they should, yes. Same issues you're gonna have there.
Monetarily, if you're thinking about cost-effectiveness, it would make sense to put the permanent ones in.
Depends how much money you have to start with, let's be honest with you.
Yeah, council will discuss it, either way, we're putting something in, so.
I think the bottom line is you need to get, you're looking to get something done as soon as possible. I don't know what...
I'd rather get something done the right way, I'm not somebody that does things quickly, I like to do it the right way, so you do it one time, to be honest with you.
Again, the miles that I specify have been used in other towns on some heavily traveled roads, they didn't have any issues with them, and they've been there for more than one year.
We're not gonna put junk in, Caitlin. I trust Mr. Catania.
They've been there for a year, they're holding up for that.
More than a year, more than a year, actually, yeah.
And there is no such thing as a silent speed hump.
You understand that, by the way.
No, I know that.
Speed humps, by its very nature, emite a certain degree of noise.
So do the revving engines that are speeding down the street at all hours of the day, I don't care about the speed humps, and neither, as you guys know, neither do our neighbors. But the temporary ones, they just create another issue for us. So it just, I mean, obviously, it's up to you, but, what was that? I mean, you can say something, you could say it loud enough, it's like an area.
You're good.
Who are you speaking to?
Mr. Gilroy just was saying something under his breath, I just...
I missed it.
Sting, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Caitlin. Mr. Catania, do you have anything else? Thank you, sir. I have a few items, we have an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting, the topic is the zoning hearing board and public safety involving parkside police coverage. A quick update on the ALS coverage, as I announced at the June workshop, we will be covered by the state senator and the county of Delaware for one full calendar year, once the initial contract, assuming we go with that initial contract with Mainline Health, is executed. So we will be covered for one full calendar year from the time that is signed. We will begin shortly our negotiations with Aston, as far as to determine what the cost sharing will be, as far as percentages go. And once again, I want to thank the county of Delaware, and I want to thank Senator Kane's office for assisting, assisting us with that, it was a huge lifeline that we needed, very costly, costly contract. That's a $300,000 cost for one year, split equally for the first year between Aston and Brookhaven, and we split it evenly only because it was... And we split it evenly only because it was paid for, not out of Borough tax dollars. I need a motion to approve the June 6, 2022 council meeting minutes. I'll make the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries. The June 27 council workshop minutes will be voted on at the next council meeting. And I have one more item. I need a motion to approve the Chandler Drive traffic calming concept plan as presented by engineer Charles Catania.
Can I say some, one more thing?
You don't have to state your name again.
So I received a letter June 7, 2022, from the Borough Council. It starts, "The Borough of Brookhaven is in receipt of a correspondence from residents who reside on Chandler Drive requesting the installation of permanent speed humps on Chandler Drive to deter speeding and help with traffic calming." Among other things, it says the word "permanent." And I signed it as well as, how many more of my neighbors? 78% of them? So
Well, technically, nothing's permanent. I mean, the road
Come on, Terry.
Well, the road that you drive on, though.
Cut it, like, cut, cut the, just, it says permanent.
Okay.
It says permanent, so we're not going to go with temporary. We're going to go with permanent because that's what everybody signed and that's what
I'm not getting into, I'm not, I'm not getting into, I'm not getting into specific language. We got here, I'm glad we got here.
I am not
And we should all be glad that we got here.
I am glad also.
I'm not getting, I'm not, I'm not getting into specific language. I mean, that's
Isn't that legally binding?
No, because nothing's permanent. The ground we walk on, the roads we travel on, are not really permanent. You have to pay very seldom.
There is no such thing as a permanent speed hump. Speed humps, like everything, have a shelf life. And again, I don't know exactly what the shelf life
To answer your question, no, permanent shouldn't have been in there because such a thing as permanent. I'm just glad we got here, so.
As Mr. Catania indicated, the shelf life of a speed hump depends on many factors. And again, accidents on the roadway, snowplows hitting it, perhaps large vehicles hitting it, excessive heat and/or cold can also damage a speed hump. So again, there are many factors that go into the shelf life of a speed hump. But again, there is no such thing as a permanent speed hump.
Jay, I don't know what we'd do without you, I really don't.
Let me do this.
Once again.
Let me do this. How about I get priced for council to install permanent speed humps. You're going to see the value of that and then you make a determination.
Sure, we know and we assume and really know this. Motion to approve the Chandler Drive traffic calming concept plan as presented by engineer Charles Catania. Who wants the motion?
I'll take the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further questions or objections? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Other than that, I report general progress. Ms. Sawicki?
Yes, thank you. We do have bills to pay for this month.
You're welcome.
And the general fund is $56,130.98. Zoor fund is $211,663.88. Trash is $1,306.46, for a total of $269,901.32. So I am making the motion that we do pay those bills, which I signed tonight. So they'll be going out in the mail tomorrow, so if we please second the motion.
Who wants a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I do have one other item. I did get the memo from Chief Montella. We do, we should in the next two weeks be getting our bill for $304,623 for the first installment of our two trucks that we're getting. So we do have the money.
Our trucks, yes.
Just so everybody realizes, we do have the money, we're covered, there's no problem. We got most of our money from the American Rescue that Washington sent to us. And we are, we do have money in our fire escrow that we've been saving for years. So we do have the money to cover it. We are getting two police, two fire trucks next year. We got two police trucks, police cars last year from the rescue money. So I think council very wisely decided to do public safety as their topic. And I was very happy to see that. So we do, Chief has two new cars and Chief Montella will have the two trucks next year when they come in. So they're in process right now. And I was very happy that the entire fire company actually decided how they were going to be built, their smaller trucks. And we were able to combine our money with the American Rescue. So I think we're going to really enhance our public safety. So I just want to commend both men for helping us do that. That's all I have.
All I have to do is figure out how we have to pay for ALS after this year, so.
Well, that's my next, that's my next problem. That's going to be a real problem, guys.
Of course.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. The ordinance committee will meet on Thursday, July 21 to continue our discussion on the responsible contractor's ordinance. Let's see, we're going to talk about rec board events now. Yoga and volleyball are still going strong and it's been discussed to expand volleyball throughout the year. And yoga will be extended for another 10 weeks since it's been so popular. July 14, 21, and 28 are books on Blankets Outdoor Storytime at Eaton Park from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. These events are sponsored by Middletown Free Library. July 17 is the Second Annual Show for Hope Car Show at Coburn Elementary from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. This car show raises money for the Hope for Haley Foundation and it will be from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Just wanted to reiterate that time. July 20, Concert in the Park
Check in for the cars is 8:00 a.m., right, you should say?
Yes, it is 8:00 a.m., sorry. July 20 is our Concert in the Park at Eaton Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Budista Brothers will perform and hopefully it won't rain, but if it does rain, we'll probably bring it into the gym, right, Tom? But hopefully no rain. July 28 is kids photography class at Eaton Park beginning at 11:30 a.m. This is for kids aged 6 to 10 and their caregivers. Younger and older siblings can join, but content is catered towards 6- to 10-year-olds. Registration will begin on July 14. The link is on the website for anyone interested. Olivia's Storytime will be tomorrow, Tuesday, July 12 at Eaton Park from 12:00 to 1:00. We will have additional fundraisers at Iron Hill Brewery on August 3, 10, and 17. 20% of the sales will go to the rec board for upcoming events. So please mention Brookhaven Recreation Board when ordering in the restaurant or takeout. Brookhaven Borough's Family Day will be Saturday, September 24 from 12 noon until 4:00 p.m. Here at Brookhaven Municipal Center. Ticket signups begin in August. Please see the website calendar or your mail calendar for the start and end dates for signups. The Shred and Electronics event will be Saturday, November 5 at Coburn Elementary School parking lot. So Tom will need the forms filled out for that. And I just wanted to end with, I'm excited, there are some potential new businesses, hopefully, coming to the Borough. They're still working on their plans and their agreements, so I'm not going to say who they are because, you know, anything can happen, but some of these businesses are really great. So I'm excited and I can't wait to where I can tell everybody what they are. That's all my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mrs. Heller?
I only have two things. One, I just want to wish an early happy birthday to Mr. Wills, who will be celebrating his birthday this Friday. So happy, almost your birthday.
First line.
Yes, I was going with 27, but okay. And then the last thing I have is just to wish Chief Vice a happy first anniversary as well on Friday. So thank you so much for all you've done this year, so congratulations. That's the end of my report.
Mr. Pappas, sir?
Very briefly, Mr. President. I attended a workplace safety meeting on the 28th of June. Proud to announce no injuries to Borough employees were reported. There was no accidents above Borough vehicles. And the Borough did meet its annual requirements for the certification under the Workplace Safety Program. That is all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vasquez is excused. Mr. Gilroy, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Police Officer Taylor Ridge Clem. It's an honor him to join the department. Secondly, I just have for the historical committee meeting, we will be meeting August 17, Wednesday will be the next meeting. The July meeting, we will not be meeting, and that will be it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie is excused. Chiefs, anything else? Brings us to the second public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, people's law.
Uh-uh.
It's, sir.
Town bag's 305 West McCamper Road. With the Recreation Board, just so everyone knows what's going on. On Thursday of last week, we had our first books on blankets at Eaton Park. We had about 15, 16 families there, lots of kids, lots of stuff, and the parking lot was full.
Good, that's great.
Good use for that, we had that, that was going on. We let people know we can still take registration for that and do that. It's Brookhaven residents and some people from other parts of the county that are nearby. People who came from other towns came down. We never knew this park was here. This is so needed, so cool that this is here. So hopefully we'll get some of them to come in for events and letting them know about the concerts going on. Really, a small concert right here, where we can have our playground with the concert. They loved it.
You're pretty excited.
I'm glad.
I know, it's fun to find out this stuff.
That's good.
And it's costing us no money to run this, to run that program, which is the best part. We're still actively working on Family Day, we're trying to get that going. Anyone would like to make a personal donation to Family Day, we're more than happy to take your donation. We'll receive as much as possible for running that off. With that, on a Borough note, Mr. Catania?
Uh-uh.
Uh-oh, for you. I was looking online and different things and this item came up on stormwater management from Australia. They have two things that they're doing there. One are netting, large netting bags that they put on the end of storm drains when they go to the creeks to filter out anything, so any trash that happens to make it down the creek. The other one, which I thought was really, really neat, you know the mesh baskets that you get that you can fry? They have large ones that actually go into their storm drains on the street. So it'll take out the trash and, you know, get rid of it before it gets into the stormwater. So maybe that might help with us lowering our numbers of any, just something I thought might be of value. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else that would like to speak for public discussion? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Going once, going twice, the second public discussion session is closed. Council, anything else from any of you?
No.
Mr. Catania, Mr. Wills?
I did, I did find the question from Mr. Rose. It looks like that CO was prepared on June 20 and actually I signed it on June 23. I'll check with Matt Koppel tomorrow, find out where it is.
We've never received it.
Okay.
And as I said, my agent said I can't sell the house.
Who's responsible for delivering, delivering it to?
The United States Mail, perhaps? The proverbial, it's in the mail, but it has been issued. And you could probably call the Borough tomorrow and ask for an email copy. Click of a mouse, sometimes a bit quicker than our friends at the United States Postal Service.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.